All right, good evening. Go ahead and reconvene after closed session. Starting off with our actions taken in closed session, read out from our clerk, Mr. Trustee Wright.
There were no actions taken.
Next, we have invocation was supposed to be led by trustee Jamal, but he is unable to make it this evening, so trustee Wright will lead the invocation instead, and then trustee Lang will do the pledge of allegiance, so please stand.
Our Father who art in heaven, we thank thee for gathering us together in this board meeting. We thank thee for the freedoms that we have and to live in this great land of America. We are especially thankful for our students and our dedicated faculty, staff, and administration in this district. We continue to pray for additional rain, that it might relieve us from our drought conditions. And specifically, we pray this evening for those individuals who have been affected by the fires in the western United States, particularly in the states of California, Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. Bless us as a district as we begin to, as we begin this new fall semester. Bless us in our decisions and efforts this evening. We pray for guidance, and do so in his name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have no resolutions, we have no commendations tonight. So now we'll move on to public comments, of which I have four slips presently, no more coming. Okay, so our first public speaker will be Kathleen Greiner. And then on deck will be Hillary Nelson.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Greiner, Dean for Business Sciences Online and Extended Education at IVC. I want to remind you of an IVC special event tomorrow. The Accounting Society and School of Business Sciences at IVC presents California State Treasurer John Chang, who will speak about the 2008 California debt crisis reflections and lessons, probably many on both. Professor Bennett Chakowski, who's here this evening, has been instrumental in organizing this event. It will be held tomorrow at the PAC, 11:30 to 1 o'clock PM. Thank you.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to hear Treasurer Chang speak, and he's very dynamic, and if you have the opportunity, please go. So then next we have Hillary Nelson, and on deck would be Paula Jacobs.
Good afternoon, board members, my name's Hillary Nelson. I'm a part of Saddleback College's CNSA membership director. And on behalf of CNSA, I'd want to address the faculty contract for 2014 through 2017. I just wanted to acknowledge that I know that our board members are very invested in our student success. And I think that's very evident in the reputation that Saddleback College has in IVC as well. And so I know, since the board is very invested in the students, that they must be invested in the board mem, in the faculty as well, because of all of the efforts that they put into making such great students and making a great reputation. So I ask that the board members consider the contract for the faculty for 2014 through 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next we have Paula Jacobs, followed by Autumn Estrada.
Good evening. I hope this is the last time I have to appear before you in my green shirt. As you know, I'm a senior faculty member. I began my career some 40 years ago in the Palm Springs Unified School District as a high school teacher. Unfortunately, in my first year there, we had to go on strike because we reached impasse on contract negotiations. I began my career in a district that had to go on strike. I hope I don't have to end my career in a district where the faculty is forced to go on strike. Please, let's settle our contract. Thank you.
Thank you. So our final speaker is Autumn Estrada.
Good evening, my name is Autumn, thank you for introducing me. I am the president of CNSA at the Saddleback Chapter. CNSA stands for California Nursing Students Association. Not sure if one of my board members, Hillary already stated that. I'm here on behalf of not only the nursing staff, but also to speak for all the faculty. I'm sure you might be aware that we have to take a lot of prerequisite classes in order to get into the nursing program. So many of us have taken courses at Saddleback and IVC, and I'm here to support our faculty. They work diligently to support us, and they work hard to make sure we're successful. So one of the things that I wanted to mention was the availability for office hours for full-time faculty, and also the difficulty of getting office hours for part-time faculty. So wanted to mention that. And I believe that the best way that the board can support our student success is by supporting the faculty. So as, as president of CNSA, and I think all the nursing students, all the Saddleback students and IVC students, I think that we would like to ask you for your support of the faculty by approving the proposal for the contract.
Thank you. So next we'll move on to board reports. We'll start with trustee Lang, so that trustee Witt can get an idea of how these work.
Good evening. I first wanted to welcome our latest addition to the board, Terry Witt. And extend congratulations, best wishes, and also any help that I can provide to make the orientation process any easier. I also wanted to thank my fellow trustees for their efforts in selecting trustee Witt among a field of highly qualified individuals in my absence. I also managed to miss both colleges in services during the preceding weeks, when my wife and I were on safari in Africa and attending an IFLA library conference meeting in Cape Town. We managed to see an incredible number of animals of all different varieties, which I'm happy to regale you with at another time. We met some very interesting people of various colors, denominations, and backgrounds, and enjoyed other interesting sights and experiences. Such trips never fail to broaden my personal horizons, appreciate the freedoms and the bounties that we enjoy as U.S. citizens, and hopefully serve as a good ambassador for our country. However, it's always good to be home. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
August 4th, I had, my son and I took a tour of IVC. Glenn Rockmore did just a wonderful job. We were there about two and a half hours, and it's a beautiful campus, I hadn't really seen it that well before. A couple of things that stood out to me, one of them was that we went to the veterans' office, and we were met by two employees that helped the veterans, but we also met two veterans, and they were so interesting. And they were saying that IVC is the place, the place, it goes through, the veterans know to come to get help, and to, for all the, and all the programs are there that they are, can use through the government. Also, they, we met, the two, one of them was from Afghanistan, had worked in Afghanistan in special forces, and he was really interesting to talk to. The other thing that happened to us, we were there at the new, the orientation week for the students, and as we were walking around, we ran into a student ambassador. The student ambassador was taking the new students, this is before school began, around showing him the campus, and then Glenn got to speak to him. And my son spoke to these students, and I did too. It was real, and it was really a wonderful experience, and I want to thank Glenn for the two hours that he spent with the two of us. And then for the professional development week, I attended everything. I don't know if everybody wants to hear about it, for the lack of time. I went for the, for five days, attended, and got fed a lot, and it was wonderful. They, it was very wonderful. I went to two sessions that I thought were really interesting. The student, Saddleback College Student Success Committee update, and then the Common Assessment Initiative, the benefits and potential challenges for the California community college system. That one I thought was really interesting, and I really enjoyed it. And then I went to also Online Education Learning Resources luncheon. It was a wonderful week, you work so hard, you did such a great job, it was great. And Terry, congratulations on the board, we're so glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so again, congratulations, welcome to the board. You'll find out what you got yourself into here shortly. I attended an event on Friday, it was hosted by our recently elected, almost a year ago now, but recently elected House Representative Mimi Walters, in, at the Irvine City Hall. Elected officials from around the area were there, and she presented some of what's going on in Washington, and some of the misconceptions about the division between Democrats and Republicans, and what you see in the media. And it was very, very interesting. And she did speak to some things that would be a benefit to the community college system in general. So that was nice. I was not able to make the formerly known as Flex Week, now Intercession, or Staff Development Week. I wasn't on safari, I was in Cabo, so. It's my really only vacation time before I start school next week. But I did receive my, my welcome packet from Saddleback, thank you. Got a T-shirt and a, the book that has all the new hires, so it was nice to see that. Welcome all those new staff that were hired. And the book, Five and the Twenty-Five, I will be getting that and reading that, and looking forward to seeing why it was picked, and we'll go from there. Trustee Wright.
Thank you, and let me also add my congratulations to Dr. Terry Witt. She's a wonderful person, and is a great choice. Let me just point out that we actually interviewed eight highly qualified candidates, and so it was a, it was not an easy afternoon that we spent in selecting the new trustee, but congratulations, Terry. I also attended a number of activities during in-service, her professional development week. Wonderful activities. It was a terrific back-to-school week. I started off by being here at Saddleback College for the Welcome Back Breakfast and Social, and then went over to IVC and attended the president's breakfast and president's welcome. Very well done. The chancellor's opening session I thought was extremely important, and I really enjoyed it. Outstanding speaker. The keynote speaker was an individual by the name of Dr. Paul Grossman. He's the chief regional attorney, retired officer of civil rights, U.S. Department of Education. And he talked to us about student equity and student success, and did a wonderful job in telling us about some of his experiences that he'd had. I also attended the president's breakfast for the faculty on Wednesday. Went to IVC that afternoon and attended the full-time and part-time faculty meeting, so that I get a feel for what was happening at IVC. On Thursday, I attended the Geek Report at IVC. And then I went back to Saddleback College that evening and attended the president's associate faculty dinner. Development week I thought was, was wonderful, and I counted up, I think I attended about 15 different sessions during that week. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchek.
Hi, I also welcome nursing professor Dr. Terry Witt to our board. I thought I'd mention that I first met Professor Witt many years ago, when she came to my husband and all of the local doctors, asking for donations of meds and medical supplies for the humanitarian health missions she led annually to Thailand. When she learned of the need, she led similar humanitarian health missions to Ethiopia, Belize, and on the home front, she brought disaster relief to the devastated areas left after Hurricane Katrina and Hurricane Rita. So I'm looking forward to working with our own. I'm looking forward to working with our own Mother Teresa on our board, even if it's only for another year, but we really can use her expertise on these areas. I also did an Excel spreadsheet on, on the professional development activities I wanted to attend. And when I looked at the spreadsheet, there were 27 different events on it at both colleges. But when I counted the three events I attended prior to professional development week and after, there were 31 events I attended. So I'll mention a few of the events I attended outside of the professional development week. First, I attended the South County Secret Senior Summit, where I was able to talk about our Emeritus Institute and do some interesting research and discussion on brain research. Then I attended Saddleback College Greece at Saddleback College, which was an incredible production, and was free to all of our constituents, pointing to the wonderful resource we have for our community members, that they can come onto our campus, sit under the stars, and see wonderful musical productions, Under the Stars, for free, and perhaps really become a part of our college community, which is what we're looking for. I attended the TAS Open House. Professor Ken Lee invited us, the board members, to go to it. And he was telling us, that he said, "I know the board has very high standards for our students and for our faculty, and I want to show you that we are really taking this into account." And he showed us slides of the wonderful, wonderful gardens that he saw all over Japan, and it was really interesting. He's also starting a blog on the TAS area, and it was things about going on in that particular arena. I also attended the Congressman Walters breakfast for local officials. And I won't go into the other 27 events I attended, but they were really informative, and I learned an enormous amount, and I really enjoyed seeing many of you in the room at so many of them. Thank you.
Thank you. So trustee Witt, you'll see on two of your monitors, there's a clock that counts down two minutes of your time. Some of us modeled how that works, and some of us didn't. Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank the trustees, I appreciate your support. And I'd like to tell the audience, I have been a trustee now for one hour and 50 minutes. So I don't have a lot to report, except to say how I feel. And I feel honored, eager, and proud. I feel honored to be appointed to the board. I feel eager to serve this wonderful community. And I'm very proud of the nursing students in this room. I appreciate that you're becoming. That you are involved. Everyone just sees us in the hospital. We can make wonderful impacts because of who we are and who we serve. So thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Okay. Just real quick, trustee Milchek, you mentioned Mother Teresa. The annual list came out, this year's incoming college freshmen, most of them are 18, born in 1997. They've not been, they would never know who Mother Teresa is by having been alive when she passed away in 1996, along with Princess Diana, by the way. And they've never licked a postage stamp.
Oh, my God.
It's a fun list, you should look it up. Anyway. Chancellor's report. Oh, student trustee, I'm sorry. Student trustee.
I'd like to welcome trustee Witt.
Thank you.
And can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, just making sure. I'd like to start out by talking about the chancellor's opening session, which was very nice. The motivational speaker, the former attorney general, he was a very good speaker. Highlighted a lot of important things regarding disabled students, which I thought were important to think about. And most importantly, I'd like to talk about the student trustee workshop I attended on behalf of the district. I thought it was very educational and important for me to go to that. It helped me better understand my role as the student trustee, and understand both sides of the position. And so with a better understanding of the position, I'm hoping to become more active and improve my correspondence with both student governments, and I'm happy that school's back in session.
Chancellor's report.
Okay, just two quick items. One is in relation to the budget that's on the agenda tonight. This year's total budget, all funds, all activities is $655 million. And it'll be fully discussed by Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons in item 6.1. Also, the, just a brief comment about enrollments. After the first week of the semester, we are down district-wide just very slightly by about 2/10 of a percent. Of course, each college is different, IVC is up by 2.2%, Saddleback is down by 0.9%. The average of the two, because Saddleback's larger, is down about 0.2%. This is the trend statewide and nationally, that enrollments be stable and going down. And so it shouldn't be alarming that that's happening, it's happening elsewhere. And I know that the colleges are working hard on strategies to bring even more students in. So they'll be trying more and more strategies, and we'll see what happens. Thank you.
All right, thank you. College presidents, we'll start with President Burnett.
Thank you. Congratulations, trustee Witt. Chancellor Portner, you, one of the things I did want to talk about, we, as you all know, we started our semester, and yes, enrollments are on our mind. During professional development week, in the state of the college, we've been talking about for the last couple of years, knowing about all these enrollments pressures. And yes, I have to report finally, good news. I'm actually a little more pleased that our enrollments at Saddleback actually are flat, we'll call them, from the prior semester, which is a nice relief from the prior year. I have to say that the hard work of our faculty, our administration, our staff, has really started to pay off. And more importantly, is we've identified so many things over the last few months that we are going to be able to improve on for the future. So we're much more optimistic where we're going with enrollments. Another thing, the start of the first semester is, if you didn't notice, I'm sure the students in the audience did, and certainly the employees, is that parking was a lot better this semester, for the first semester in the fall. Everybody's going, "Yeah, what happened?" Well, what happened is our campus police decided and did a fantastic job of a new way of directing traffic, of directing students into parking lots. In fact, they call it the Disneyland Plan, and it paid off handsomely. So I wanted to thank our campus police for the great work that they did on that. Also, responding to professional development week, it was another big success, as many of the trustees had noted. And once again, want to thank our faculty and academic senate, our deans, our classified staff, and many others for making it such a success. As you know, during that week, this is when each year, we present the annual state of the college. Hopefully you got that in your packet as well, for those of you that were not able to attend. And this year's report, if you haven't, or for the audience, is called "A Culture of Excellence", and I encourage everyone to read this, we'll be sending out a college-wide, as well as community-wide presentation of this. And with that, please mark your calendars, the annual state of the college breakfast for the community is scheduled for September 24th, 7:30 to 9:00 PM, hope to see you all there. Finally, on Friday, real quick, we had a participatory governance retreat we do every two years. I wanted to thank our academic senate leadership, our classified senate leadership, CSEA leadership, faculty association leadership, our associate student government and their leadership, our management team, and the faculty association for participating, now we had roughly 50 people. Thank you.
Thank you. President Rockman.
Thank you very much. Welcome, trustee Witt, great to have you there. I would like to start with a couple of introductions in my report. First is our new Director of Student Life, if you could stand, please. This is Anissa is her real name, she goes by Sessa Heard Johnson. And she comes to us from the South Seattle Community College. She's a graduate of San Diego State University and the University of Oregon, and she's a doctoral candidate of educational leadership at Seattle University. And next is our new Assistant Dean of Financial Aid, and that is Ken Lyra. And Ken comes to us from the College of the Desert, where he has over 22 years of industry experience in financial aid administration, including serving on the board with the California Community College Student Financial Aid Administrators Association. Welcome, Ken. And then, if anyone has not had the opportunity to come out to the college and see the Solar Decathlon House, you're really missing out on something. One is to see all of the students from IVC, from Saddleback, from Chapman, and from UCI working together. If you come out and take a look at that house, you'll see that it looks like a house. They are well along in their project, getting most of the work done now, putting on solar panels, and getting it ready for the competition, so come out and take a tour. And then finally, on, well not finally, but on Laser Week, that was referred to earlier by trustee Jay, was our very first time in having students come before classes start and take some workshops. We had 400 students take us up on that opportunity to work with our faculty and staff and administration on learning about how to be a student, how to go to IVC, and how to be successful. So it was a great first time out. Then finally, please put on your calendars, our 9/11 event, which is on 9/10. And this time, instead of noon, it'll be in the morning, out at the Live Oak Terrace, as we have a great speaker for that. It'll be a very different event than you may have seen in the past, so please come out. Thank you.
Thank you. ASG, we have, go ahead and go with AS, IVC, or Saddleback.
Good evening, everybody. Just to remind, I'm the president of Saddleback's student government, and my name's William, just in case we haven't met before. We had a great retreat two weeks ago. Everybody from the student government came, that's part of the student government came, and we learned about what our goals are, as well as some administrative procedures. For Welcome Week, which is the first week of school, we had our table in the quad, and we had a lot of response from students, a lot of students want to get involved that we didn't even know about. So as part of our mission to get students more involved, we're building a volunteer base so that we can reach out to people that maybe aren't applying for an official position on the student government, but still want to volunteer and take part. Otherwise, everything's going well, we were having our first week of meetings this week, and look forward to doing a great job this year representing students.
Thank you. ASIVC.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everybody. I had the opportunity to sit in the IVC Foundation Board Retreat Meeting, which allowed me to have a better oversight on my goal-setting for this year, and it was definitely a great experience. We also had our first senate meeting last Tuesday. We are happy to announce that we are working on setting obtainable goals that we plan on accomplishing this year. And also, finally, we are having a lot of new applications for open positions, and we plan on finding new team members to help us continue accomplishing the best we could this year. And so far, this year's going great, hopefully to keep on, to keep on with that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I realize I was your miss, trustee Witt. Did you have anyone in the audience you wanted to recognize in supporting you, and you're swearing in, and your addition to the board? I totally messed that up earlier. They laughed. Now I feel really good. Oh, nice. All right, this is our natural break, for those of you who were here for the public comments and the reports. And if you would like to step out, this is your opportunity to do so while we get set up for the discussion item we don't have.
Really, I'm sorry about that.
All right, so from there, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent calendar items. Do I have any polls? Trustee Wright.
I'd like to poll 5.7, 5.10, and 5.12.
Okay. Do I have any other polls? Seeing no requests to speak.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar, a second from Trustee Wright. Seeing no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the balance of the consent calendar. So unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, and one student advisory yes vote. So Trustee Wright, 5.7.
I had a question about 5.7. As I read through it, it said that this was a design-built project, but due to ongoing construction issue. What are some of these ongoing issues that they're having?
We're having quite a series of ongoing issues over there. Primarily, the building envelope, when it was installed, was installed at a low-quality level, and it has to completely be removed.
Okay. Because I know it was supposed to be, on August, it was supposed to be completed, and now it's December.
Yes, it is. And that's the primary reason the building envelope will be removed. You'll see, over the course of the next few months, you'll see some tarps going up, you'll see it come down, and go back up in a much better shape.
Okay, thank you.
For those that aren't in the construction business, do you want to explain what a building envelope is?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the stucco and the framing that goes. So you've got a building that has framing, and then you'll see board go up around the building, yellow board, and then some lath, and then some stucco, some, let me see, what else is in a building envelope? Well, the roofing is part of it. So the curtain wall is also part of it. We didn't get to the curtain wall, but we did get to some windows, and all of that is coming off. We're starting over. Not completely. We'll still have a frame out there.
Well, it's good to know the frame is good.
Yeah, the frame is good.
When will they be able to use the building then?
We were originally scheduled for spring, and now we're looking at probably fall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we have a motion to approve from Trustee Lang, and a second from Trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Next, you had 5.10.
My question there is, what are commissioning services?
Commissioning services are related to the HVAC, and so the heating, the ventilation, the air conditioning, a little bit with lighting and controls. And what it ensures is that those components of the building are installed in accordance with the way that they're specified. And there's so many technical aspects to this kind of equipment now, that it takes a specialist to go in there with their tools and ensure that the ducts are sealed appropriately, the controls are set just right, those kinds of things.
Okay. Because when I hear the word commissioning, I think something different, so.
Oh, money. We're hiring people for money now. No.
I have a motion from Trustee Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Milchick. All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote, 5.12.
The reason why I pulled this is this is concerning me, and so I'm going to have to reclusive myself from voting on this. But this is a leadership conference, Congress, but it's for the Association of Community College Trustees. And so we're going to learn about the new community college model. So I'm looking forward to attending that.
Actually, I would like to see if we can amend this. I was interested in going to this conference as well. Is it okay to add it to this? Or just do it for the next meeting?
We don't need to. We don't need to add you.
Yeah, if you're interested, once it's been approved, then any board member can attend if they would like.
Because I know Trustee Jamal and I talked about it.
I thank Trustee Wright for bringing it to our attention. I know one of the things we're talking about, our board members, for the last four, five years, never go to any meetings. And so we think it's a good idea to go to a meeting, you know, once in a while, so we learn what other trustees do and what other districts do. It's very educational, it's helpful.
So I had a motion from Trustee Lang, and
I'll second.
Second from Trustee Witt. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. Said unanimous yes vote, one abstention, one absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you. That's the conclusion of the consent calendar. Now we go to action items. 6.1, adopted budget. Believe we have a presentation with this.
Good evening, board of trustees, chancellor. We have before you tonight the adopted budget for fiscal year 2015-2016. Presenting tonight are myself, Vice Chancellor of Business Services, as well as Carol Hilton, who's the Vice President of Administrative Services from Saddleback College, Davit Kachatrian, the Vice President of Administrative Services from Irvine Valley College, and Kim McCord, who's Executive Director of Fiscal Services and Controller at the District. Before we start a presentation tonight, what I'd like to make sure you're aware of is we have a replacement page, and you'll see it in the presentation visually, and replaced on the internet for the trustee's docket. But it's Page 5 in the presentation, titled Overview District Funds. So when we come to that, we'll show you what those changes are. And with that, we have Kim McCord, I mean, Carol, Carol Hilton. We have it. Okay. There we go.
Okay. Good evening. So when we develop our budget in the district, we follow the guiding principles of the Budget Development Guidelines. And there are 11 Budget Development Guidelines. And the first one is the reserve for economic uncertainties. And we've said that this should be 7.5% of the projected unrestricted general fund of the district, through the unrestricted portion. And so if we choose to take any action on that by a staff member, a board member, or the board as a governing body, then we need to actually bring that to the board meeting, and also accompanied by a plan that indicates how that reserve will in fact be restored. And then at the end of the year, that contingency, which we call contingency or reserve, if not touched, will fall into the ending balance and be re-appropriated the following fiscal year. Number two is our future long-term debt issues. We have said that there will be no additional certificates of participation, which are a form of long-term debt, or any other long-term debt, that will be issued unless we have an ongoing revenue stream that's been identified for full payment of that debt. And in addition, a dedicated revenue stream that will show the payments. So that is a very prudent way that we, you know, we look at our debt, and we take it very seriously. And through our basic aid, we fund projects upfront, so we don't have to go into debt for those projects. Our third guideline is retirement incentives. We say that there will be no retirement incentives provided unless funds have been identified that will cover the full cost of that savings plan, and that will be sufficient to pay the actual cost of the incentive, plus implementation and recruitment costs. Number four, which is the area college allocation. So when we have our allocations that come to the colleges and the district services through the DRAC, what we call the DRAC model, we're talking about those area allocations in this regard. So we are based upon a revenue-based model, so however many FTEs that the colleges generate, then the revenue corresponds with that. So it's a revenue-based model rather than funding expenditures. So to that end, the colleges cannot spend more than they earn in revenue. And so if they do, if the colleges or district services, if their expenditures exceed the revenue, then they carry that deficit over to the following year. If they do not spend all of the revenue, then they carry the positive over to the following fiscal year. So the allocations, whether positive or negative balances, carry over. Number five, deficit financing. Deficit financing is defined when a budget in which projected expenditures exceed projected revenue. So deficit financing should not occur, number one, especially for ongoing expenses such as salary increases. And if that happens, which it shouldn't happen, but if it did, the amount of that deficit financing should always be presented in the budget document and clearly identified. Number six is for our retiree, medical, dental vision, and other coordination of benefits, et cetera. We have an irrevocable trust in this district that was formed back in 2007/08 to fund this retiree liability for all of these benefits. And we say that we must do an actuarial study every two years to determine the actual cost of those, of those, I just realized, I didn't move it on, sorry, the actual cost of those benefits. And so we actually do it every year now, because we've seen that some of these actuarials swing wildly. And so therefore, we do it every year at this point. And so we also say that it's our intent to fully fund that liability, once we've established exactly how much that is. Basic aid. So basic aid is what, so after we funded the district services and the colleges for their operating costs with the DRAC model, whatever's left, we call basic aid in this district. And so while we're in this basic aid district, the expenditure budgets for ongoing purposes should have been the resources that would be available from state apportionment. That would be the DRAC model. So that's what we say, is that that's how we fund the colleges and district services. Then any excess revenue, which is what we call basic aid, will be allocated at the college or district level for one-time purposes only. And this stems back from when we were basic aid in the prior year and fell out of basic aid, and we had all kinds of problems with our finances. We got through it, but we didn't want to go back to that particular situation. Item number C, excess revenue above apportionment shall not be used for ongoing expenses such as salaries. So there again, it's the basic aid P should not be used for salaries. And excess revenue above apportionment shall not be used for any purposes that will jeopardize the fiscal health of the district. And then finally, we developed our board policies in AR 3110 that talk about how we allocate basic aid funds and the processes. And they will be followed when we allocate basic aid funds, and they create a very transparent process that's very well-understood throughout the district. And then finally, number eight is our one-time cost savings. What we're really saying is that if we have any one-time cost savings, then we should use those one-time cost savings for one-time expenditures. So with that, I'm going to pass it along to Davit, who will continue with the Budget Development Guidelines.
Thank you, Carol. I'm going to combine item nine and 10, the guiding principles, nine and 10. These two essentially are the principles around the FTEs, full-time equal and students, and what we use in the DRAC model to develop local budgets, or the allocations. The main principle here is that we closely follow SB 361, which is the state allocation or apportionment formula. And also, we account for things like the needs in the community and the students, of course. And also, the FTEs set in the model has to be realistic, something that we can achieve. And all of this actually is embedded in SB 361. For example, if the state, under the state model, if you don't achieve your target, FTEs target, there's an adjustment that happens after that initial year. So we follow closely what the state would have done, and the issue, or the goal, rather, is that if we were to lose our locally-funded or basic aid status, we would know that the state would fund the SB 361 revenue amount, and that would hold the district fiscally sound. Last item on the principles is budget planning, and there are two main laws that are one of the cornerstone stones of our planning principles. And that is the 50% law and the FON, which is Faculty Obligation Number. 50% law, we've done presentations on it, but this is something we track on a monthly basis, if not often, than that, especially in our DRAC and BARK presentations or meetings. We follow closely where we are as a district, because there is a 50% threshold and our limit on the expenditures, or it's a minimum, actually, rather. And then the FON is the Full-Time Obligation Number, which is also a district-wide calculation, and that's also followed, and the calculations are done by Human Resources. And that is used in our local processes. At IVC, we have a multi-year planning process, and I'm sure Saddleback is doing the same thing, where we account for the FON implications and things we have to do to make sure that we comply with both FON and the 50% law. Finally, we get into numbers. This is the replacement page that Dr. Fitzsimmons mentioned. This is a layout of major funding categories. General fund is $311.3 million, which includes $270 million unrestricted and $41.2 million in restricted funds. And you see $400 million in other funds, which includes those funds listed on the bottom as a footnote, Community Ed, Child Development Center, OPEB, for a total of $711.3 million district-wide for '15-'16. And this is a listing of major changes since the tentative budget that was presented to the board earlier. The main change here, as listed, you will see, that unrestricted ending balance went increased by $7.4 million for a total of $47.6 million, which is the ending balance from last year, which becomes a beginning balance for '15-'16 fiscal year. Unrestricted revenue increased by $5.3 million, mainly due to property tax revenue, they're better, and the lottery and non-resident tuition estimates. And restricted funds increased by $7.2 million to a total of $41.2 million. This is restricted general fund. And a little bit about SB 361, there are a couple of key components in the state model, and they're all listed on the slide. COLA is, following the state, calculated COLA, it's 1.02% for the district, it's $1.3 million allocation. FTEs growth is calculated, again, following the state FTEs growth model, that's 2%, which is $3 million district-wide. There is a base allocation adjustment that the state, what the governor introduced, and it was approved by the legislature, which is $6 million. And this one, the way it was introduced and adopted was to address some of the, the main pension increases and the health insurance cost increases that the system as a whole is experiencing. So this was meant to help with those increases as well. And we're going to have a couple of slides addressing the pension increases specifically. And full-time faculty obligation, this is a calculation for South Orange County, it's $1.5 million or 1.04%. This is slated to hire additional full-time faculty, and it came with a requirement that that FON number that I mentioned earlier is now higher for South Orange County Community College District. So this allocation is meant to assist the district with meeting that obligation. And as Carol mentioned earlier, we follow our DRAC model, which is a revenue distribution model, and it in turn follows SB 361. Last but not least on this slide, there is one-time slash expiring funds, which we keep a close eye on, and that is, of course, the Proposition 30 funding that's expiring in 2016, 2019, and also the one-time mandate block grants that the state allocated this year. It's also one-time. With that, I would like to turn it over to Kim.
Thanks, Davit. This next slide is going to recap our expenses that are in the budget. First, we always include our step-in column increases for all of our full-time staff as they move across those. As you know, we're in the middle of negotiation still. We have not settled any, so no increases were included for state COLA or any other amounts. Hopefully, those will get settled soon, and we can include those. The STIRS rate is 10.73%. That's a 1.85% increase. We'll be going over a slide that details that further. PERS went up about .07% to the 11.847% of salaries. Health and welfare only had a moderate increase of 2.1% over last year. Our workers' comp and unemployment insurance rates remained flat from last year. And we did have an increase in our general expense of $132,000. This is an increase since tentative This is an increase since tentative budget that you saw. That's to maintain our legacy finance system escape. You know, we just went live with Workday. But we do have a need to retain our prior fiscal information and have access to it, so there is a cost to maintain that. Okay, here's our basic aid funds. Our beginning balance of $24.9 million. This was an increase from what you saw at tentative because we did get increased property taxes at the end of the year. The second line, the receipts for the current year are actually down. That's because more of the revenue went into the SB 361 model, and therefore, fewer dollars were available for basic aid receipts in the new year. So that left a net of, or a total of $69.7 million available for basic aid. This is down about $1 million from what we had at tentative that you had proved. Our contingency is still at the 20% mark. It's lower because we had lower receipts to put the 20% on. And the total projects are $60.7 million at the bottom there. That's a decrease of about half a million dollars. We had two projects at the very end of our work with basic aid group that we actually ended up defunding. It was the Saddleback Cafeteria remodel and the IVC Keyfob projects. They were the last ones in, and when we realized with the new taxes and SB 361, we had a little less money, we took those last two projects off. So hopefully, they'll get funded in the future. Okay, so here's our slide, you've seen this several times. This is our retirement system increases that we're projecting. The STIRS rates across the top, those are set in statute. So the 10.73% in that second column will increase 1.85% every year until 2021, where it'll be 19.1%. The PERS rates, actually, this year ended up a little less than what we had had in prior years. But they do still have new projections would get it up to 20.4% by 2021. So you can see each year, this will increase the amount that we have to set aside for STIRS and PERS contributions. And by 2021, the increase over last year is over $10 million a year. So these are significant increases that we need to accommodate. And in fact, they're so significant, our annual CCFS 311 report that we do is our state financial report. They've now added a new requirement. We now need to report these estimated increases that we're anticipating and how we're going to fund them. So part of that is the money that David mentioned. We got an increase in our base allocation that was intended for these new ongoing costs. So we need to report to the state how we're going to fund this each year through 2021. Okay, Deborah's going to continue looking ahead.
Okay, looking ahead. So as cost increase and demands for programs and services increases, the new ongoing income does not keep pace. So we did have a very positive budget this year from the state. We did get one-time dollars from the state, like the new mandated cost money, but those are one-time dollars. So there are going to be challenges and ongoing impacts to the colleges and district services budgets. So we need to continue to strategically plan and link our district-wide and college planning initiatives to all resource decisions so we can be prudent. Okay, there you go. The increases for this adopted budget, as I said, primarily consist of one-time increases, but we have these ongoing needs. And the STIRS and PERS rates, as Kim had indicated, are very, very large. This California State Chancellor's Office has provided us with a cautionary warning. So here's a quote from the State Chancellor's Office from Maria Rodriguez, who's the Assistant Vice Chancellor for College Financial and Facilities Planning. And it was regarding the base allocation increases for fiscal year 2015, 16, and for college districts to be cautious. And basically, what they're saying is, while the increases are greatly appreciated, and this was to the state, it will be not covered the entire cost associated with pension fund increases projected in the coming years. Further, given the normal business cycles end coinciding with the looming sunset of Proposition 30 revenues, which are going away in 2016 and 2019, as David had said, we cannot simply assume the receipt of another large increase like this in the future. Given these concerns, the Chancellor's Office is taking a step to help ensure community college districts are properly planning these resources with future obligations in mind. So there you go. We have a very positive budget, again, but we can't plan on having this kind of budget again in the future. So we still have to be very prudent and conservative in our actions. And with that, that's the district budget proposal for adopted budget for this coming year. And we'll take any questions.
All right, thank you. Do I have any trustees requesting to speak and ask questions? None? Thank you for your presentation. Oh, Trustee Wright.
This is just one small correction. I was just noticing that on the narrative that we received for this item 6.1, I think Debbie, I may have mentioned this already, but it says, "Major capital outlays, major projects at Saddleback College include," and I was referring to item D, which says, "Pre-designed investigations of the math-science-engineering building." That's really the science-math building, SM building.
Yes, I'll let Brandy know, we'll make that change in the title of that building. Thank you so much.
I lived in that building for-
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Student trustee, Mamad.
Yes, looking at the Exhibit A and the different basic aid projects and the capital projects. Last time, there was something mentioned about a gateway building. Is that, has that been scrapped or, because I don't see it in there?
No. The gateway building is still in the priority list for Saddleback College. But for this fiscal year, no additional dollars have been allocated for the gateway.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so no more requests to speak. We will need a motion to adopt the budget. I have a motion from Trustee Wright, second from Trustee Milchker. So no further requests to speak. Go and vote on the item. Trustee Witt, we're voting on the item. There we go. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisor yes vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
6.2, we have the adopted student government budgets.
Good evening, everyone. Switching gears a little bit, we're going to talk about, I guess, the why for that previous presentation, the why we're here. And I wanted to just take a quick moment to say I'm so thrilled the students are presenting to you all tonight. Such an amazing opportunity. And the reason why that is, is because we, in the Student Development Office of Saddleback College, are founded in an educational philosophy of the growth mindset, if you will. And that means that some of the greatest educational opportunities come through challenge and rigor. And the students who have stood before you over the past eight years are now serving in the White House. They're working with the UN. They are teaching, facing challenging high school students. They are doing some pretty amazing things in the world. And I'm convinced they're doing it because they cut their teeth with you all in this space here. And they had this opportunity to step up, to craft their own presentations, and to step up and really kind of take on the challenges that come with putting yourself out there. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to William here, who's going to cut his teeth tonight, I guess, a second time, right, presenting to you all. Oh, there's one other thing I wanted to mention. In for Saddleback ASG, one thing to note is that their revenue varies slightly differently from that of ASIVC. So just note that when you go through the presentation, they actually get all the contract revenue that comes into Saddleback College, goes to the college, 60% of that is allocated out directly to the divisions for more operational, student-oriented expenses, if you will. And ASG spends about 40% of that. So you're going to note that when you see. And the reason for that is that we really, really wanted to focus, and I think the college were helping us with this. We wanted to focus on student leadership development. We wanted to focus on the opportunities that come with student learning over just allocation of funds. So that's the reason for that. So William, it's all yours.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that awesome introduction, Audra. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Porter and President Burnett. It's good to be back here. I'm happy to present the 2015, 2016 adopted budget to you. Just a minor note, William Bassatiza is presenting it, not Jake. Jake was not able to make it this evening. He had a physics quiz or something of that nature. So, so in just a month or so, which I presented to you our tentative budget in, ASG's advanced a lot. I've learned a lot. We've put a great team together, and we look forward to launching our first week of meetings. There's not too much different from a tentative budget, except the fact that we will be receiving more funds from the bookstore than anticipated in our tentative budget. This is very exciting for us because we'll have more funds to work with to improve our campus and promote student success. We were able to, we were able to restore allocations to the different departments and sections we had previously cut. So we had, for example, restored funding to the, actually, I'm sorry, we increased funding to the science and math departments. We funded what we call the Science and Math Lecture Series at school, which are basically a series put on by the Science and Math Department. On Fridays, students come in, they get to hear about awesome projects in the field and hang out with like-minded individuals. So these are the kinds of projects we've decided to fund. This is just one example. And thanks to the increased revenue, we were able to do so. So just a small example for you. After restoring the cut departments, we also placed $20,362 into what we call special topic grants. Essentially, what this is, is that any department from the school or ASG member or club can apply for a grant from the student government. We have a formal process, they apply for funding. We will be looking to fund projects which directly impact students. And we'll be meticulous in making sure that these funds are spent carefully. We'll be as wise as we can. We're excited to see what kind of creative ideas we get to hear about and see as a result of this. We plan on selling $80,000 worth of ASB activity stamps this year. I'm going to click on to the next one. $80,000 worth of ASB stamps this year. We're going to do a great job in providing awesome services and activities for the people that have purchased an ASB stamp. And in doing so, it'll be marketing. Everyone wants to buy something that looks great, that they'll look forward to enjoying. No one minds paying for something they'll like. So we want to use that as a fundraising source for ourselves. The emergency reserve is still 75% of the subtotal revenue, a healthy and necessary cushion to have. So those are just some of the budget highlights. And although I've scattered some of the goals throughout, I'm going to just mention a few more to you. They're more clearly outlined in the slide. We talked about student engagement, for example, through the use of ASB stamp funds. Student engagement is the top priority. In fact, one of the top complaints I hear from people is that the majority of students feel like there's a drawback to attending community college because it lacks campus life that perhaps a university might not. And that people just come, kind of come and go like robots. They come to their class and leave. And we're going to plan on working to fix that with the student development team at Saddleback. So they're already doing a great job, and we will be working with them to do that. So on top of these things, we intend on making ESG more efficient overall, increase our effectiveness, and keep the communication flow through organization to reach our goals. And lastly, we're going to make sure that our special topic grant money is used wisely. As Audra mentioned about the contracted revenue, we, ASG receives 40% of the contracted revenue, and we allocate that back out while 60% of the contracted subcontracted revenue from the cafeteria and bookstore are automatically allocated through the college's budgeting process and not through the student government. Just a note I wanted to add in there. Thanks again for this opportunity. It truly means a lot to stand in front of you here today. Thanks for taking our voices into account. And thank you especially to Audra and the student development team, Aaron Long and Emily Maynard, for being such great advisors to us. We really appreciate it. Happy to take any questions.
I have a request to speak from Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, first of all, that was an excellent report, I really appreciate it. And I do agree with you that the students that are, studies show that the students that are most at risk are students that just come to class and go home and maybe work full-time. And the students that really have more, at least traditionally, have stuck to it and completed the college are the students that have some feeling of belonging on the campus, like student government or being in the, on the lariat or being, you know, some way or another. So I applaud your goal of letting the students, getting the students to feel more involved. I also wondered, I was reading when you said that the tentative budget to the, to the final budget, you increased your revenue. Was that because the cafeteria and the bookstore revenue increased?
Sure. So actually, yes, it is, because the bookstore performed better than we had initially expected. So that's the reason that our revenue is up. And just speaking to student engagement that you mentioned, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, I'm engaged, and I think it makes a big difference. So through clubs, and for example, the quad redesign. If we can get people to become more invested, we've added red chairs at Saddleback College, and people are hanging out. Maybe it's just a matter of having extra infrastructure there for people to be involved. So simple things can make a big impact in people's futures and their education. Just having people talk to each other makes a big difference.
Wonderful, thank you.
The next we have IVC's presentation.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Porter, and President Rockmore. As I said earlier, my name is Sessaher Johnson. I'm the new director of Student Life at Irvine Valley College as of August 3rd. Thank you for this opportunity to present the ASIVC budget. In my short time here, ASIVC has been engaged in discussions about their fiscal responsibility and transparency and the role that ASIVC has in providing services, activities, and resources that assist students in their academic achievement and in their retention. I believe that this budget and their goals for the upcoming year are alignment with our campus strategic goals around student achievement and will be demonstrated as evidence throughout our accreditation process. So I will now introduce our ISIVC President Adam Tatinji and Treasurer Alvin Ing.
Good evening, my name is Adam Tatinji. I am the ASIVC President. I would like to begin by thanking our new student director, Ms. Heard Johnson, for the wonderful introduction. I would also like to thank our Board of Trustee members, Chancellor Porter, and President Rockmore for allowing us to speak today. I am happy to announce that we had, we have had a growth in our budget since the last time it was presented. This allowed us to allocate more funding to the mid-year requests and to the amazing programs and activities we have on campus. Without further ado, I would like to present Alvin Ing, our new ASIVC Treasurer. He will be going into more detail regarding our budget.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alvin Ing. I'm the ASIVC Treasurer. And I'm here to highlight and reveal the final drafts of the budget. I would first like to begin with the change regarding to the sources and use of funds, I mean, sources of funds. The first changes would be the increase of beginning fund balance of $83,358, which is, came from the underspend expenditure and the additional revenue. Furthermore, we also have an increase in the revenue of $50,000 for our bookstore and vending machines sales. To the use of funds, we have, we have a minor decrease in the ASIVC operations. Also, due to the increase in the source of funds, we are able to allocate more into our mid-year requests, which is total up to $112,861. These mid-year requests, we can now fund more programs which previously could not be started due to the lack of funds. Finally, we have an increase from 10% to 11.2% of total revenue for our emergency reserve. And this is all regarding to the change in our adopted budget. I would like, I will now turn back to Adam for the remainder of the presentations.
Thank you, Alvin, for your presentation. Moving on to our highlights from last year. This was presented in the previous Board of Trustees meeting in June. I am pleased to say that our previous ASIVC leaders were able to accomplish great things with our student body. An example of such would- student body. An example of such would, an example of such would be our co-curricular programs, which we hope to keep accomplishing great things with. Moving on to our 2015-16 budget highlights, we have had a couple of changes since the last Board of Trustees meeting in June. This accounts to our ASIVC operations and our contingency and mid-year requests. Finally, to what we truly stand for is our 2015-16 ASIVC goals. These have also been presented before, and as I stated in my report, we are working on accomplishing great things this year. Thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions, we will be more than happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any trustees requesting to speak? Trustee Milchker?
Well, I thought this was excellent as well. And do you have the same, I know, I noticed again when I was reading the agenda that your revenues increased from your tentative budget to your final budget. Is that because of the increase in bookstore sales and cafeteria sales, or what do you attribute that increase to?
Yes, it increases, the bookstore had an 8% increase in overall sales, and then the cafeteria contract brought us in 40,000 more this year with the new contract.
Excellent. Thank you.
Seeing no further requests to speak. Thank you very much. Nice job.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the student government budget.
Move approval.
Motion from Trustee Milchker, second from Trustee Wright. Seeing no further requests to speak. We'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisor yes vote. Very good. So we're now on item 6.3, which means I need to temporarily assess the meeting to hold a public hearing. This is for the Saddleback College Technology and Applied Science Swing Space to enter an agreement with San Diego Gas and Electric for an easement on the lower campus drive of Saddleback College. But before we have the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons will provide an introduction.
Yes, thank you. The agenda item 6.3 pertains to a public hearing to allow the district to enter into an agreement to provide an easement with San Diego Gas and Electric to provide electrical utilities for the Saddleback College auto technology building swing space pursuant to the requirements of Ed Code Section 81310 and Board Policy 3101.6. This code permits public agencies to authorize an easement to a public utility company for utilities on the public campus following a public hearing. There's an additional board item that relates to this public hearing, item 6.4, which is the item that will authorize the district on behalf of Saddleback College to enter into an easement with San Diego Gas and Electric to provide electrical utilities, and the item includes the resolution and easement agreement itself. If you have any questions throughout this public hearing process this evening, both Brandy Delena and myself are here to assist.
So does the board have any questions to staff or consultants to assist with their understanding of this matter? Seeing no requests to speak. Board item 6.3, public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. If there's anyone wishing to make public comments, comments are not to exceed five minutes. We have no request from the public to speak on this public item. So the public hearing is now closed. So if there's any further discussion on this item, seeing no requests to speak, 6.3 is concluded. We'll now move to item 6.4, adopting Resolution 1535, authorizing the dedication of an easement with San Diego Gas and Electric at South Orange County Community College District for Saddleback College. At the conclusion, if approved, I have the document resolution to have each of you sign. I have a motion to approve the resolution.
Move approval.
I have a motion and a second. Is this a electronic vote? Yes, okay. Seeing no further requests to speak. We'll go and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisor yes vote. So as mentioned, I will sign this and pass it on. 6.5, Board Policy Revision. This is for review and study. So there's no motion necessary? Or actually, yes, we need a motion to review and study. Okay, I have a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Wright, and Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons has something to add.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that there's two board policies in front of you for your review and study. We did include AR 4011.1, Recruitment of Full-Time Faculty, for your reference, because it was helpful to see that there is language that was taken from the board policy made into the AR. And if you have any questions on that, Vice Chancellor Bagay will be happy to assist on that one, too. Thank you.
Okay. Any requests to speak on the item? Seeing none, we'll go and vote. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisor but. Apparently, I need to remind some people who may be new or forgotten, you need to have your phones on airplane mode, or data off, or interferes with the recording system. Is that buzzing noise you guys hear? Thank you. 6.6, Academic Personnel Actions.
Move approval.
Motion from, motion from Trustee Milchker. Are there any changes?
Yes, for on page 12, D1, we'd like to change it on the third line versus fall 2015 semester based on the equivalent of a 15-bank delogee, not 18. There's a typo there. So we change on the third line that 18, from an 18 to a 15.
Okay. I have a second from Trustee Lang. Seeing no requests to speak. We'll go and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisor yes vote. Next, we have 6.7, Classified Personnel Actions. Any changes?
Yes, for one, on page, on exhibit A, page 1 of 17, A1B, Kristen Bush, we're going to employ her at Saddleback College, not Irvine Valley College, even though IVC really wanted her.
Just stole her, just like that. It's a stroke of a pen.
Yes.
Motion from Trustee Lang, a second from Trustee Milchker. Seeing no requests to speak. We'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisor yes vote. 6.8, Initial Proposal from South Orange County Community College District Police Officer Association.
Accepted for review and study.
Have a motion and a second. Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright for review and study. Any more information on the item, other than what we have? All right, we'll go and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisor yes vote. Now for reports. 7.1, Pilot Program Hiring Policy for Classified Staff. Anybody need any more information on that, other than what's there, or do you have anything more to present on that? Okay.
On this one, we have a backlog of classified positions that we need help with. We were inundated, and we had other difficulties in HR. So we worked with a group with Juan Avalos, Vice President of Student Services at Saddleback, and also David Ketytrin from IVC, and we looked at a couple of other colleges. And so we're going to launch a pilot program using an exception clause found in the current board policy, and have a pilot program. And we hope that the results of the pilot program will eliminate the backlog, and we can move forward quicker on our recruitment of classified staff. So we don't need board action on it because there is a clause in there allowing the chancellor to make an exception based upon the policy, but because of the scope of, we wanted to make sure the board was aware of it.
Thank you very much. 7.2, Basic Aid Report.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that the changes from the July 2015 report includes $52.6 million of new receipts and $60.7 million of new project allocations that were included in the adopted budget that you all approved tonight, and that this annual report also displays the detail of all closed projects totaling $182.9 million. So we had a lot of activity going on over the past couple of years.
Great, thank you. So the new items are highlighted in yellow, just for recording purposes. 7.3, Monthly Financial Status Report. Any new information there? Any questions on that? 7.4, Quarterly Financial Status Report. Moving on, 7.5, Quarterly Investment Report. Questions or more information there? Seeing none. 7.6, Facilities Plan Status Report. Seeing no questions there. 7.7, Retiree Trust Fund. Information?
Yes. I just want to mention, I'm sure that you've noticed in the news over the weekend, there's been a lot of stock market activity. And our balance today, well, first of all, the balance on this July report was $93 million, and with a return of 5.88%. The balance today was, this morning, was 90 million. So it did go down $3 million since July 31st number, particularly over this weekend with the activity. We did talk to our consultants, and to simplify what happened and occurred, two things have happened which the market has interpreted as a slowdown in growth. Oil prices are down, and China has devalued their currency. So this has caused some fear and subsequent selling of equities. Our consultants expect that the market will rebound in the coming weeks, and that stock markets are historically cheap because of the sell-off, so it's going to be time to be purchasing some stock and making some trades.
That's not insider trading information, is it? You didn't just get us all in trouble. Okay. Thank you. All right. Reports from administrative and government groups, Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Portner. My name is Blake Stevens, Academic Senate President for Saddleback College. Congratulations, Trustee Witt, on your appointment. Glad to have you here. Fall classes are into their second week. I'm very encouraged by the quality of our students. I have to let you know that. Saddleback College Academic Senate had its first meeting of the year on August of the academic year, on August 12th. We're identifying our senators via division voting and placing faculty into our more than 50 committees. We're already focused on curriculum, accreditation, and the new full-time faculty hiring prioritization list. Quite a mouthful there. Last Friday, President Burnett hosted a retreat for college leadership, and it went very well. And we look forward in the near future to a new faculty contract. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Faculty Association. Nice segue.
Hi, Claire Cesario, Faculty Association President. First of all, on behalf of the Faculty Association, I'd like to congratulate Terry Witt on her appointment to the board, and I think that you're going to make a great addition to the board. I'd like to also thank the board members who came out to the Faculty Association luncheon during Professional Development Week. And it was one of our most successful Faculty Association luncheons in a while, with well over 230 people in attendance. And I think that, of course, people were anxious to hear about the contract. We've been, we're going into our second year now without a resolution on the contract, so of course, people want to get that information. And I am also excited to welcome the 24 or so new full-time faculty and the many new part-time faculty we have in our district, and hope that everybody has a great semester. Thank you.
Thank you. IVC Academic Senate.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Schmider, President of the IVC Academic Senate, and I'd like to echo my colleagues' remarks, and of course, welcome our new board member, Terry, to the, to the board, and to thank those of you who came to various events over Flex Week at IVC. Thank you very much. We understand that some of you were unable to come, but we expect your better attendance next time. We also are, of course, entering our second week of classes. We also had our first Academic Senate meeting last week. So really, it's very much an echo of my colleagues. We're looking forward to a very good semester and a successful accreditation development, report development process. We have a long time before the report is due, and we're planning to use that time carefully so that we're not rushed at the end. And we've already begun having meetings cooperatively with Saddleback, so we expect that the two accreditation teams will be in close communication and in good accord. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor, Technology and Learning Services.
Number four.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor, Human Resources.
Congratulations, Trustee Witt. You continue to serve the district in a fabulous way. Congratulations on that. Recently, Human Resources, we sent a crew over to Camp Pendleton again. We did more than just recruit. We actually participated in a couple workshops on resume writing and how to interview properly. We had several of the vets and their spouses who are interested over here. The other one is a major pile of stuff that you accumulate. You have the official first edition of the OHR newsletter. I'm certain you'll be on the edge of your seat reading it. We included a column called Fun Facts that we think HR people might be the only ones interested in what's fun, but just in case you're interested. So with that, it's something brand new for us.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor, Business Services.
Welcome, Trustee Witt, and no report tonight.
Okay. Irvine Valley Classified Senate.
Hi, my name's Karen Martin. I am the President of Classified Senate for Irvine Valley College. And this is my first official board meeting. I was unable to make it last month, so it's an honor to be here. I began my presidency on July 1st, along with four board members and 10 area senators that compose our officers for Classified Senate. We've had two general meetings up to this point. The first one was more, served more as an open house to explain what Classified Senate is on, at IVC, and to kind of just introduce newer classified employees to Classified Senate itself. We concentrated on the governance process on the campus, as well as in the district, and seeked volunteers, sought out volunteers for serving on the district as well. And we also focused on assessing professional, or accessing professional development funds, and the next Classified Leadership Institute hosted by California Community Colleges, Classified Senate for CS and Ventura. And then during Professional Development Week, we had the honor of being invited to present a classified series of workshops on campus. So we had Vince Cooper, who discussed the resource request process, Corey Garner, who presented with V-FAM from Hyatt Legal to discuss the process for developing wills, living trusts, and health directives, and Dennis Gordon presented on the role of classified employees in the upcoming accreditation process. And then the week ended with a generous breakfast hosted by our President Glenn Rockmore, and he was very informative. It gave a lot of information that our classified staff really appreciated. And then we also had the honor of Trustee Milchecker, who attended the breakfast that Friday, and she also attended the accreditation presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. CSEA.
Hi, I'm Scott Ferguson-Green, President of CSEA, Chapter 586. On behalf of CSEA, we'd like to congratulate Trustee Witt to being appointed to the board. It's been a very busy week already, within the last seven or eight days with the classified staff. One of the things that we are doing is, CSEA is being represented by participating in a problem-solving work group that Dr. Burnett has put together, and we think that we've made a lot of progress in coming up with a recommendation to actually be able to solve problems at a very low level. I've also been working with Dr. Rockmore, and we're going to be doing the same thing. We really want to try to get some of these issues that, before they become very large and fester into a big forest fire, we'd like to be able to find a way to be able to solve problems by working with management, by working with Classified Senate, by working with the Academic Senate, by working with administrators, managers, and deans, so that we can actually be able to solve some of these, these problems that we do have at a very low level, and be able to find remedies for them. So CSEA is very much a part of the process. We'd like to thank Dr. Burnett and Dr. Rockmore and Chancellor Portner, who really spearheaded all of this to be able to get us to come together and participate in this. So we're looking forward to more work. So, we're looking forward to more work and being able to present this. We also are looking forward to working with both Classified Senators and being part of Professional Development Week, as CSEA looks more opportunities that the state is being able to provide, so that all of us can really benefit from Professional Development Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening. My name is Dennis DeHalske. I am the President of Classified Senate for Saddleback College. As of right now, we have not had any official meetings, but my executive team and I have already had a retreat this summer where we discussed items that we wanna be able to accomplish over the next year, including a rewrite of our bylaws and items that will bring us more out in the open with the campus, so that they know who we are and what the Classified Senate does. I've also taken part with my executive team in President Burnett's Class of Consultation Council retreat last week, and it was very informative, and I think we accomplished a lot to get ready for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome, both of you. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. I will make public note that without trustee Jamal here, we finished just after eight o'clock.